Be fun. That's a really big event in a lot of cities. I don't know how, how big they start out, but we're gonna find out. He's hoping for a large crowd. He's, he's arranged with the Transit Authority to do a loop in Martinsburg. And the loop is, I guess the loop is advertised somewhere so that people can park on that loop and get picked up at anywhere. Loop comes up here around the county complex and goes back down, so you can park anywhere you can find parking on that loop and hop on the bus and get a ride back. So, good idea. Good idea to, to do something like that. But, and then the, the Roundhouse, last night, we did not have a quorum. But we, we met and discussed a little bit what was going on. I'd like to, I'd like to see if we could get a list of the members that, and I'm looking at Tracy, if we get a list of the members that didn't show up. There's some of them that miss a lot and we don't get quorum. And if we could get a list of that, so that we could just send them a letter. Somebody indicated that, what's his name? Doug? Doug Long? Somebody indicated that he had told them that he didn't want to be on that board anymore, but he's never sent anything in. So, it may be good just to send a message out to them and say, you know, if you're not, the members that aren't showing up, if you're not interested, you know?
Well, the secretary, the secretary should have all that.
Yeah, and typically, we don't get involved in
In that side of our, of our appointment.
Because that's got the, that's got the minutes. I mean, they'll, they'll have an inherent minute of who was there. But once they compile it now, we, we got it from Stedman before about removing members from that.
Right. They can send us, HD can send, send us, send the council request to have them removed because of the, this is stipulating the bylaws as far as attendance goes.
Okay. We'll, we'll talk about that internally. But there, there's, there's something needs to happen there so that we can, can actually do business. But it just doesn't seem to be happening. They're having an event this weekend as well. The, what is it? Arts, Crafts and Arts Festival or something that they're doing down there at the Roundhouse as well. So, there's gonna be a couple of events going on at the same time in Martinsburg, be able to go back and forth. So, that's pretty much it.
All right.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir. We had, I had two meetings. I had the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, we met through Zoom. My notes were down in my truck, but from memory. The ridership on on-demand ridership is up, you know, not significantly, but it's, it's in a positive note. The, the budget is, they're gonna have to critique it on a couple of little things for, for the expenditures that they had on a couple items. But other than that, seems to be going pretty good. The, of course, they're still on recruitment for badly need of drivers. So, they're only having one, and one route. They haven't started back up yet because of the, the overtaxing the drivers that we do have. So, anybody that has a CDL and then
Don't you have a CDL?
Yes, I do. And they are actually, the state is actually giving a reprieve that you do not have to have your, passing your endorsement at the time of hire, that you can be hired and then make plans to get it.
That's crazy that the DOHs don't, their drivers don't have type CDs?
Mm-hmm. Most of their trucks are under 26,000.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that why?
Most of them are, yes.
Most of them?
Most of them.
Okay.
Yeah, they have those hinos. Yeah. They're okay till we get a little snow and they don't have the weight for the power.
Or the traction. They'll be sliding around. And then on the Airport Authority side, we, I did meet in person, but we had some meet by Zoom. The positive side of that is, is that the charter service is busy. The plane will be going in for maintenance here soon, so the next month is gonna show a little bit decline in, in our charter service. Fuel sales, full service and self-service are steadily on, on an increase. We had an event out there. The Commemorative Air Force was out there over the weekend. Weather was not the best, but actually was, was well attended. I think they, they had a donation bucket out there for the MRB Foundation and they, they garnered over, I think you said over $500 to be put in the foundation for donations given by the people parking. The, they were giving rides in a couple of the old airplanes, well, for sale, not giving, for sale. And like I said, it was about 600 and some people showed up for the, through the couple of days. So, it was, it was a pretty good event. And I'd like to publicly thank Bill and Bonnie Stubblefield. They hosted a hospice event for Sherri and I that was sold at the, at the dinner. We had that this weekend. And Jack Lang and his crew came with some of the singing boatmen. So, Jack showed up with, with his pontoon boat and we were serenaded by, by a quartet of gentlemen.
Jack sings, huh?
No, he was the boat guy.
Oh, okay. All right.
He had the pontoon boat that they, that they got and went and came down screaming.
But yeah, I want to thank Jack and Mike who helped out significantly in, in the preparation with Bill and Bonnie and, and Jack and his efforts too. So
Yeah. A lot of good things.
Jack's one of them solo singers, you know? Sing solo, you can't hear.
Yeah. But it was, it was a little chilly, but it couldn't have been a better night because the rains went through on Saturday and had a nice fire and, and so it was a pretty good event. And 10 people showed up that we fed and, and crab, shrimp, beef, and all the fixings.
That's good. Good. Congratulations. Mr. Gokenaire?
Yes, sir. Also attended the Chuck Taylor Memorial, which, you know, in a previous life, you know, I worked with Chuck when he was on the police department and I was still on the fire department. And I know that Chuck would have been very proud of the event that day and would be smiling, looking down, especially when his grandson got to be the first child to be equipped. That was pretty special to the family. Yeah. I did have a planning commission meeting where we had three public hearings. There was no attendance or opinions voiced by the public on either of the three. Also had a park and rec meeting. The programs were in full swing for the, for the winter. And it amazes me the amount of programs that they have going. I mean, and they, they don't stop. They're, they're just continually growing these programs. The Doughboy, a lot of the work has been completed on it. The, a couple of the plaques have been redone, where they had to go in and reconfigure names and add folks that were missing and, you know, put everything in order. So, it's coming along very well. And the, some of the groundwork is completed. I think the footage is reported for the granite base at the park. So, that's, that's coming along very well. I will say that that board, you know, I, I sit there the other day and I just kind of looked around the table. I think that they're, I think that board is very healthy. I like the look of it. We've, we've got folks who have many years of experience. We've got some new folks coming in who have bring a lot of energy. And with the leadership of the, basically of the executive board and, and the new director, I think that this, this board is, is doing very, very well. I'm real pleased and love the work that they're doing. So, I think a lot of the things are coming for them. The Baker Heights Firehouse, we met Tuesday. It was Tuesday. The roof should be completed tomorrow. The sheet box is being finished right now. So, they're, they're moving along even though they were behind in getting like the roofing material. I still think that they're gonna be ahead, ahead of schedule. And it's a very nice, very nice facility. And yesterday morning, I attended the Development Authority's Appreciation Breakfast, which was very nice. Gave me the opportunity to meet some additional folks that I hadn't met before. Very, very nice. Thank you. Very, very nice.
The, at the fire hall, they were talking about being able to get those lights to get out there on New York Avenue and Route 90, you know? And I'm asking you, it's my board, but
Yeah, I, I haven't been part of that conversation. I don't think that that should be difficult. The state should be able to assist with that.
But that's probably gonna need to be done within the next couple of months, huh?
Yes, sir.
Was that part of the bid process for the, that whole section, or is that something that they're doing outside of that?
What's that, the light?
Yeah, because they had that bid process went out, I don't know, a month or so ago. I think it's about
Oh, you mean on Route 9?
Yeah, to change Route 9, add lanes and all kinds of stuff. I don't know, I don't remember if that was on that bid process or not, but
I know one of the things that I talked briefly about was making that right shoulder head west towards 81, making it just, just labeled as emergency vehicles only.
That's gonna be a lane.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the only way that fire truck can get
Well, it's still gonna need a shoulder.
Yeah.
But, but yes, especially certain times of the day, from 2:30 to 4:30, it's really congested through there.
I mean, it can always go through the parking lot, but that's not, that's all private property.
Yeah, and that's not a good idea.
Right.
Say, take out that median, concrete median and make that a dedicated priority line.
Yeah. But something has to happen there to be able to get that truck through that intersection. I mean, I'll call Hunter up and ask. All right. Fire Board did meet. I wasn't able to attend, but I can tell you that the fee collection is up from last year. And the balances are strong from last year. So, continues going down the right path and, I think everything's in good shape there. We have a letter we'll be putting. The South Berkeley has made a formal request for paid staff 24/7/365, which will be part of our readhead for next week, I guess.
I don't know why, but next week's pretty full. Because you have Board of Assessment all morning next week. So, we're probably beating that before.
Yeah, so basically, it's following the protocol that needs to follow. And so, the fire departments will ask for assistance through the Fire Board itself, and then the Fire Board will, will ask the County Council. So, and then we'll go back and get it on record, the same process to get Back Creek Valley to do the same thing. That's the big story on that. That's all I have. The report on any board and commission activities on vacancies?
Yes, sir, there are. I know that we've gotten all the packets back from the LEPC for Ron Stevens, Christina Jackson, and Jason Hoover, all three of which have been very active and really involved with that, with that organization. And I'd like to go ahead and just make the recommendation that we appoint, reappoint those three back on the LEPC.
So, that's a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second? Have a motion on floor in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any other activity? All right. If not, we're moving on to Sandy Hamilton, Executive Director, Burke County Development Authority, requests to apply for industrial access road funds for Project Razor.
Good morning. Isn't it a great day to be alive? Not that I know what it's like to be dead, but I just got treats. No tricks.
Come on.
It's an, it's an awesome community to be a part of, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Jim.
There goes Jim.
That, that good. Just got, just got kicked to the
I'm gonna get him too, because I did that.
I don't need to.
You wanna share? In case you forget her birthday again.
No. Oh, man. I hope she's not watching.
That was low.
Yes, it was my name.
So, I, I do have an ask, and it's to receive a resolution from this council to approve the application of the Development Authority to the State Department of Highways for industrial access road funds. I know you're familiar. You gave me a resolution last year, and if you recall, last year, we made application for the industrial access road funds for Project Ferrari, and that was approved. So, you know, just a reminder, there are funds allotted for every county in the state for this. Berkeley County is allotted $400,000, but it's not automatic that we're gonna receive it because there's a certain pot of money, and if it's exhausted when they receive our application, we're not gonna be approved. So, that's why I'm here today, to ask your approval, so that I can go ahead and get the application in and get it accepted so that we have those funds for this coming year for this project. I know you're familiar with the project. I chose, and actually, my Development Authority Board of Directors approved bringing this to you today at our meeting last week. So, you know, I think that this is a good use of our industrial access road funds for this coming year, because there's gonna be some activity in that area of public safety, and there are also schools in that area. But the industrial access road application needs to be tied to a project. So, to me, this is a great way to tie to a project so that we meet the criteria, but that we improve that area as far as the roads. So, open to questions, but that's, that's the ask. I'd like a resolution from you so that I can move forward on the application process.
And if the county concurs, what we'll do is we'll do the resolution, put it in your consent agenda for next week for adoption.
Right. So, it's basically the same as the one in 2020?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's not site-specific. It's just a general resolution requesting the IRA grant money.
And that resolution has to be a part of my application. So, I can't submit the application without the resolution. So, I'm getting everything compiled so that we can get that in front of the folks in Charleston and have that money set aside for us.
Next week is fun.
Absolutely.
All right. Entertainer motion.
Second?
Have a motion on floor in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
So, what we'll do, we'll prepare it, put it on the consent agenda next week. Council can then sign it. Whatever the test is due by the quarter, it'll be ready next quarter.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, Sandy. Thank you. I seen Tony walk by.
He said he was outside Council meetings.
He wa, he is.
He was walking back for a cupped.
Yeah, go ahead. He walked towards the Ambulance Authority not too long ago. All right. Next on our agenda is Tony Lewis, Burke County Development Authority, revisions to the Berkeley County Development Authority bylaws. Good morning, Tony.
Good morning. How are you?
Come on up to the podium.
You do have the red line coffee in your pack.
Right. All right, Tony, you're looking for approval for us to adopt the new revised bylaws for the Development Authority? Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody have any questions on the?
How old are the old bylaws?
Tony, they've been, you mean, when was the last time they were updated? It's been a couple of years, hasn't it? Three?
Yeah, it was December 20th, 2018. And one of the key factors that we wanted to address in this particular revision is, in light of COVID, is tying in the ability to have virtual, virtual meetings, virtual and virtual votes.
Yeah, and I have to publicly admit that I was against that, but I do see where that can come in handy. Especially when you're 40 minutes, 45 minutes away. So, anybody have any concerns about the red line?
No. I think they also, also changed like term limits in it or something.
We did. We did propose in there a five, five-time term limit, so basically three years, five times to 15 years. And one of the, one of the reasons we discussed that in our subcommittee is that with the growth in the area and tying innovation into the, into the process, that would give people enough time to basically get acclimated with the Development Authority, to build knowledge, to present their knowledge, to senior up and then pass that knowledge on. And it would allow multiple people to have multiple opportunities and not miss out on innovators coming into the county.
And the only problem with that is I don't know that we can regulate what council members do in the future when the law already says that, that it's up to this board to appoint. And that's probably a legal question.
That is correct. It's 114, the law says it's up to the council, and it'll be unlawfully restricted what further councils can do. I think you could put a, I think that the long-term limit might be okay as long as that person will come back, but say somebody could never come back. But
I think there's a lot of gray in that law.
There's a lot of gray. So, I mean, it would have to be challenged. If you just said, okay, when somebody served one term, they're done, you can have to come back. I think that would be too much of a burden for councils. But as it's written, I don't see a challenge.
Because we, we bind a future council people all the time. It's not because we don't do it by purchasing property. We do it through lease agreements. That secures the bonds.
When we buy, when we borrow, when this council borrows money through the building commission for bonding.
That's what I say. I mean, it's a, it's a lease agreement, but you're still binding them to that commitment. So, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a lot there. You think 15 years is the sweet spot?
That was one of the, that was basically what we had discussed in our group. We thought 15 years, five three-year terms seem like a sweet spot. Obviously, open for discussion with that because we want to do the right thing for the county. With that being said, the one, the one part that we discussed too, and to the point that you're making about the future, the part that we talked about, using myself as an example, I mean, I, I serve with the word from the industry perspective. It's not like I'm going led. There's subcommittees, there's other ways to serve the VCPA as you do one. Because one of the things that we discussed is we didn't want to lose that sage, that sage advice, that mentoring of those individuals that have been within the county and within the community for that long term. And we didn't feel that that would necessarily be the case. What we would do is open up the opportunity for other people to serve at different capacities, again, to bring in that innovative mindset, potential changes, potential opportunities that they've seen in their business careers, and continue to tie the community together.
Because I'm, I'm thinking more of a sweet spot being four terms instead of five.
That's fair.
I mean, that's 12 years. We all know that's a long time. And that's still, you know, because I think, I think a lot of the boards are becoming more dynamic because there is people like you, Tony, and hey, they just walked in. That's, that's a good, fresh minds.
Yes.
You know, you get so tied up in the same thing, same thought process. And, you know, you get stagnant.
Yes, sir.
Right? So, no disrespect to any person that served 30 and 40 years at any board, but, you know, times change. It's sort of, sort of like I talked to one board member that was on a board for 40 years. And, and when I, when we was talking about the population of the county, he, he thought that the 17,000 people was the population of the county and not the city. And when I told him the population of the county was 120,000 people, oh my gosh. This is a board member, right?
Yes.
No disrespect to him, but, you know, you can't, you can't do that.
Right. Well, and relating to the fields that I'm used to, and I actually had a, listened to a podcast on the science side of things. And one of the things they talked about in that from an innovation standpoint was that most, a lot of your innovation comes from young scientists. Problem is, is once they make their great discovery, they spend the rest of their life just defending that.
Right.
And you need, you need people to think outside the box and to bring innovation into the county. And I think that was our main goal when, in trying to find that term. Whatever that term limit fits for us as a, as a community, that's what we want to support. But the big aspect that we want to definitely push is that we are encouraging innovation, quality of life, and having those mindsets sit at the table to bring new, fresh ideas to, to our region. Because it's very obvious that it's dynamic right now, and we are seeing a lot of change. And the more people that we can tap into to benefit that and engineer things properly, I think is, is an excellent step for us.
And I agree. I think there should be some, I think there should be some term limits in there. I just, you know, my only question was, you know, with, with the way the law is written, should, can you, can you restrict what you're, what you're allowing to do? I mean, and, you know, I, I understand the purpose of it, because if you put it in there, it doesn't, it doesn't become an issue on the liaison that appoints those. It now, they, they, their term expires and they've served as long as they can. And, you know, you have to, they have to appoint somebody else. But I think, and I say that because at one point, when I was the liaison, I didn't appoint someone. There was some, some, some discussion over, you know, whether I did the right thing or not. And, you know, I, I get that it's there and it's a good idea. I also, are you waving at me or you want?
Yeah, I'm waving at you, but I think a key word in the code is three letters, "may."
Right.
It's not mandated. It says a member may. So, I think that would be, give you the flexibility.
Well
Say yes!
Attorneys always argue over "may." Now, it, it may be permissive, giving future councils the ability to do what they want in the future, how some might interpret that. But I don't see this as a problem.
My, my point with it is that I think if you put it in, if you put it in, which I think it's, I think it's good to have some, I think future councils could decide to ignore the bylaws of the Development Authority and appoint somebody anyway, because I think that the "may" allows them that flexibility. So, in, in my own thought process, it's by it being a, a part of the bylaws of the Development Authority, it's merely a suggestion to the council at that point.
Well, the only, the only other thing you could do is that even, and I'm not so sure this would work, that it maybe be defeating the purposes after being appointed for four, three-year term, that you'd have to at least set out one term before you'd be eligible to be, that way, if you have, you know, somebody that can really lend to, and that gives somebody else a, a three-year term to prove theirself.
That's right.
That's actually how the Chamber Commerce Board works.
Is that right?
Set out a year before you can come back on.
Yeah, I mean
It works very well.
Yeah, there's, there's a few boards there.
Because there may be somebody that may want to be able to, young and energetic, that at the age of 60, it still wants to do something, you know?
But I think there's, I think, I think there's an argument on both sides, obviously. I think there's great value in having the knowledge and all that. Sometimes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna use, I'll use Tony for example. Tony has a, a lot of knowledge of the, of the electrical industry, you know? And so, if you have him, he's a benefit on the board to have his knowledge. And then at some point, you say, well, sorry, Tony, you've served your term, now you gotta get off. To be able to allow him to come back on if somebody else didn't come from that industry back on, I think is a good idea.
Right.
You know? I, I do like that, if you go to Section 3, that the part where you're limiting officers within the Development Authority, three years, I like that part. I think that's a, I think that's a, I think that's a really good thing to add in so that you get that different thought process moving around. But do you, do you want to change it to four terms? Is that what you think?
I'm saying that, yeah.
I'm, I'm agreeable. I think that's much better than
If you want, you can add the verbiage that you set out, at least one term before eligible to reapply. So, if that's what y'all want to do, so I'm, I'll entertain a motion.
Are you just gonna vote on that particular issue, or are you
No, I think
Accept them with that modification.
Yeah, yeah, accept them, accept the revisions with that modification.
I still have a question
Okay, sure.
On, going down a little bit about being able to, to be appointed if you live in a contiguous county or even perhaps another state. You know, I realize we're borders or even perhaps another state, you know, I, I realize we're a border state. And, and part of me looks at, look, if we can, if we can bring knowledge from wherever and make it better, so be it. But at the same time, we gotta make sure that, that in person, that these decisions they're making, that they have a little bit of skin in the game too. That they don't come here to make decisions and then they go back home and they're not affected by it, so.
It's a part of the state code, that's part of the statute.
I would argue that, I mean.
It works here, it's not that you just let someone else come in and make decisions, you have a vested interest through your employer, through your employment here.
So, so what we found is with certain industries and certain parts of, um, the businesses that we deal with, you may have a director level or an engineering level or somebody that, that's, that's, uh, very adequate to be on the board, that may live in one of your states. That has some experience that would benefit the, uh, the benefit of the development board, so looking at a potential space, I think that's why. Why we, why we would support that.
Yeah, I, I understand councilperson Doak and Ayers' concerns, we used to have prosecutor that way.
Yes, sir.
We did have a very good board member that was a part of the development authority and she actually sat, I think she was on the roundhouse as well. And she moved out of the area, but she continued to work in the area. And, uh, um, it was a benefit having her and keeping her doing what she was doing. But then at, uh, at some point she quit working there and, and resigned from all those boards.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, entertain a motion with the revis- revision.
So move.
All right, the motion is, uh, to accept the revision with the modification of a four-year, three, a four-term.
Four-three-year terms.
Four-three-year term for maximum term within setting out one term before eligible to reapply, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, we have a motion, we got a second. On any discussion, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right. Thank you.
I have two questions about that.
Yes.
First of all, you said of four consecutive terms and set out one term, so not set out one year, but set out one three-year term.
One three-year term, yes, ma'am.
And this is effective today, so it wouldn't be retroactive to current board members that maybe have already served three, six, nine years. It would start from now or would it, the county?
That's a good question, Sandy.
I'm sorry, I, you know, once in a while I come up with a good question.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a very good question.
But I think it's important to know.
I think you should be retroactive. Because if we're going, if we're going to, if we have that setting now, I think you should address it that way.
Well, if you do, if you do it retroactive, then they finish out their term.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's how we can do that.
And I mean, ultimately it's within your control because you appoint, so, but I just wanted to be clear so that we would know potentially. Because it, it would, you know, there definitely would be vacancies within the next three years that would occur because of that if it's retroactive.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be retroactive.
I mean, less than a few years ago, but certainly there's still some that.
Yeah, but if we're, if we're saying that we want that to be a policy, why would we not do, why would we just add it on to where it is now? Why not go retroactive and just that way?
Yeah, I think retroactive, but at the same time, they finish out their term that they're in.
Absolutely.
And set out a full three-year term before you would be eligible to.
I think that's the best thing, because you're gonna, you know, the new blood coming in, I would want them to have at least three years to before they get seated. You may, once they get seated, you may say, hey, you know?
I'm not disagreeing whatsoever, just want a clarification.
Right.
Should we clarify that motion?
Um, no.
All right, all right.
I actually think it should be part of the record.
Okay.
So that if it comes up three years from now, when we have some changes on the council.
Right.
We'll have it properly documented.
So this, this, it don't have to be a separate motion, it'd just be another motion to actually put in exactly what we just talked about.
You're saying to add to the motion or make a separate motion?
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion, are you willing to amend the motion, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right, amend the motion to include the clarification, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone, you in a second, let's do that first, all right, got a motion, you got a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Is there a retroactive date or are you saying what you got?
Well, it's retroactive to.
To their appointment, to their appointment date.
Yeah, so basically if somebody's there already for 12 years currently, or even nine years and they, they, their term is for three years, at the end of that term. We're not gonna say, if somebody's been there 12 years, they, they have to be removed tomorrow. We're saying that at the end of their term, they will be, that would help Tracy to make things ea- easy.
You'd sit down a three-year term before applying.
Tracy's not here.
Yeah, it will work one of the, the language.
Sure like that.
Yeah, and then what we'll do, I'll sit down with, with, uh, Sandy and, and Tracy and we'll kind of figure all that out so we know in advance.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for that. All right, this time we'll take a quick break.
Thanks for the treat, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is a board of commission interview with Matthew Murphy, candidate for the fire board. Matt? How you doing, sir?
I'm doing well. How are you?
All right. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the fire board.
Okay. My name is Matthew Murphy. Been a firefighter for thirty-five years between by volunteer and career. Twenty-three years as a career firefighter, three years in private industry hazmat, and then twenty years with a neighboring municipality. Positions held range from firefighter up to assistant chief. And basically, the reason I want to be on the fire board is to bring maybe some new thoughts, ideas. The county is growing. The departments are changing. There's also a need, as mentioned earlier, the request with South Berkeley or from South Berkeley for career firefighters around the clock. So there's gonna need to be some, let's just say, creative ways to finance, you know, bringing all more career firefighters. But at the same time, balancing it out between the existing VFDs. I know one of the things that's been mentioned is essentially taking part of the fire fee to pay for the career fire department staff. Of course, that needs to be done with a very, you know, smart balance because while that funding needs to go towards career staff, at the same time, you need to also make sure you're funding the VFDs because, God forbid, the fire board were to ever dissolve because that is created by the fire association, then it takes that money away, and then if we put it back towards the county as a whole. So also, in going forward, I think that, you know, looking at an increased fee, need to do a really, really, really intelligent media blitz, so to speak, and very, keep the public well informed. Give them facts, figures that are accurate. An example is, you know, our fire fee as it currently stands, and I went back and tried to research the last time that that had actually been increased. You know, you see it in the news right now, so does everybody, the issues we're experiencing with inflation. These so-called supply chain issues. As an example, Pierce Manufacturing, who makes, is one of the world leaders in fire apparatus, manufacturing and production. They have done two additional increases this year above their standard increase in January, which is always five percent. So because of materials, because of things like that, and the more we go forward, the fire service as a whole, equipment wise, personnel wise, it's only going to get more expensive. So to create a well-informed public going forward and trying to create, you know, increase the fire fee is going to benefit all of us. And I think it will get the buy-in, you know, that we need to from the citizenry.
And who's, who's, how do you see the education of the, to the public? Whose responsibility would that be?
I think it's everybody's. It's, it's, you know, it's going to be through fire board in conjunction with the county council. It's also with the VFDs and the career Berkeley Fire. I mean, it's got to be everybody working together. But the numbers have to be solid, the projections going forward, taking a look at everything to make sure that we're doing a fee that is manageable by the public or for the public to pay, not just an increase because, and not knowing what we want. You know, laying out that, hey, our future vision is this, our future vision is that. And going back and doing my research, in 2011, November, as a matter of fact, 2011, there was a five-year strategic plan done by the fire board. I imagine it was with a, you know, in concert with a consultant. I have not found anything since then, and so that five-year strategic plan would have been up in 2016. So one of my other, you know, kind of visions, missions would be for the fire board as a whole to look at possibly a fifteen, you know, twenty-year, starting, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, looking forward to find the answer. See where we want to be, where we think we're going to be, what our projections are going to be citizenry-wise, you know, and everything plays a part in that, potential, you know, construction, neighborhoods, all that. So, but everybody plays a role in that. And with that, everybody playing a role in that, getting those facts and figures out and being as accurate as we can. Again, having town hall meetings, putting things out in mailers to the citizens, the business owners. That's just going to help them to be extremely informed, and then those town halls will be able to actually answer questions.
So what, and I was thinking the exact same question Doug asked, but I'd like a little more, a little more to it because you kind of gave a general statement that it's everybody's, everybody's responsibility, and I agree with that. But somebody always has to take the lead and push the envelope to make something happen. So are you saying that that, you believe that should be done by the fire board to be the one to actually try to incentivize that and move it forward and come up with a plan?
Well, the fire board is the one that handles the fees, of course, and so if there's going to be a fee increase, it needs to start with the fire board. And then essentially, the fire board can, in concert with the fire association and the VFDs, as well as the Berkeley Fire, you know, chief and staff, work towards getting that information, but also disseminating it. I mean, you can find yourself in public, it doesn't matter if you're paid or volunteer, and find yourself being questioned by one of the residents. And everybody needs to be well-equipped to answer those questions, but the fire board, yes, should start it out. And then it's going to take everybody to play a role in that for the public education.
So I'm not, I don't want to assume anything, so I'm going to ask you, so by saying what you're saying, you're willing to take on that responsibility if you were appointed to this board and, and work to do that?
Me alone? No, it takes a group effort. Yeah, so, but yes, absolutely. I mean, you have to. It's got to start, like you said, it's got to start somewhere. I know it's not going to be on you because that's why there's a fire board. So the fire board, it would have to start from there. You know, but we would, you know, as a fire board, you would probably likely have to have or work with a consulting firm. But I don't think you should also get into a situation where you're spending so much money for a consultant to help you out to get this, this blitz going. I think a lot of it can be done, you know, in county with the personnel that we have.
Well, I think all of it could be done in the county. Consulting firms, all they're doing is gathering the information that the people in the county provide. That's all they do.
I like what you say, though.
But when I, when I talk about outside or maybe expenditures, that might come with, you know, a media. I mean, you're not paying the media, but if you're putting together a package, say, such as a commercial or an infomercial that would air on different stations, that would be, you know, one of the outside costs, but everything else, I believe, could be done inside.
So more of the marketing side?
Yeah, because you really, when, when you're talking about something like this, again, it's marketing what you're trying to do, and you're providing it in different facets, whether it's written, whether it's audio, visual, that sort of thing.
So what's your timeline on something like this? How long do you think it's going to take?
My personal opinion on doing something like this would be probably a year's time to do, maybe, maybe a year and a half.
No way possible.
You don't think? Okay.
Not with all the, not with all the moving parts, Matt. I mean, because first of all, you know as well as I do, and this is just a conversation.
Go on.
Where it starts really is the volunteers. And then after the volunteers, it's the, it goes to the fire association. After the fire association, then it goes to the fire board. And then you, then you got to turn back around and can't figure out your campaign. And then you, before you even do that, then you got to figure out all the costs and get all the minds together, which you know that's, that's a time-consuming process. And then you turn back around, and then you got to figure out the campaign, then you got to turn back around and go through the process of public hearing and getting all your approvals. And then you turn back around, and then you got to try to hit the timing of the fee structure to be nailed out because that was the problem the last time, to be able to do that. And that's why we did what we did the last time. It's a three-year turnaround at the bare bone minimum. And so the window from start to finish would probably be three to five years. And sad to say, with Mr. Combs in the office, we got, you know, we know that y'all gave the letter to the fire board. But nine times out of ten, they're not going to see any help. Because it's, because in order, according to the volunteers, and I agree with what you're saying, we all have to get on the same page.
Absolutely.
It's, it's going to start with the volunteers. And the volunteers are going to be the ones that coordinate that stuff, but at the same time, the county, the employees of the, the firefighters will be employees of the county. So, you know, they're, they're the ones that have to set that budget. But I agree with you with what you're saying, like Dan said, that that's the process that needs to happen, but it's a very, very time-consuming process.
Maybe I'm just ambitious, but, you know, with, with my timeline, but, you know, we have the opportunity to get this right by doing it, you know, in the correct manner. And, you know, there's also got to be careful consideration and thought given to not only the residents and where we look for an increased fee. But again, also the VFDs, Berkeley Fire, everybody working together. It can't be, you know, just everybody's got to work together. That's all there is to it.
Mr. Barnhart?
Question first. We have three applicants for the fire board. Is that for one position?
It is.
Okay. Well, Mr. Murphy, I like your, your attitude. I like your thoughts on this, and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Delia?
No, I'm, I'm going to say the same thing Jim did. I appreciate you coming forward, appreciate you wanting to, you know, spend the time and, and help solve a problem. Don't, you know, don't, don't, don't let Doug knock down your energy level there. I would say take him on as a challenge and get it done in two years.
Right.
Accept that challenge. I guess I've been there.
Mr. Whitaker?
Matt, thank you so much. I always like to commend anybody that wants to give back to the community that they live in. And, and for me, just on my personal feelings about it, it was always a hard thing sometimes to understand why you have to pay a fee and why you have to pay your taxes. And how I educated myself and you got the right attitude, right attitude, is you get on the board and you learn what that board does and how you have to understand how it works. And that's the hardest thing to get back out into the community, is that inside workings of it to the person out there that's going to hit you real hard and says, you're raising my fee again, or you, you know, you want to do that. But if they would come in like you have and want to put the effort to the community, they'll see what happens, you know. It's just not something that you want to go out and do. There's reasons for it, so that's, that's my fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gokadair?
Yes, sir. I see where you're, we're working towards your law degree. I thought, I thought you're already a firehouse lawyer. Most of us were.
Oh, we're all shade tree attorneys.
Maybe, maybe you're already ahead of that. But no, that's, that's great. I mean, I'd like to take a lot of, a lot of dedication and a lot of work to get there. Matt, you know, in this county, we've got five different departments. They all work five different ways. They all sort of, you know, their, their cultures, each, each one has their own separate culture. And my thing about people being appointed to the fire board is that they're able to be fair. To be fair to each individual department that comes before and requesting funds or any of some type of financial direction or whatever. So I, I, that's, that's my. So, I, I, that's, that's my only hope is fairness.
Just to kind of answer back to what you're, you're saying, your concern and what you'd like to see, I have, along with Chief Reining, Chief Roberts, as well as Corey Roberts and several others, you're probably aware that we started a committee essentially, it came through the Fire Association, and it was after the, the fatal fire involving Logan Young at the end of December last year, where we've started working on county-wide standard operating guidelines. Now, because all five VFDs do it kind of differently, their own way, you know, it was one of the things is to bring certain things in line with, with current practices and standards, if you will, throughout the country as far as command structure, things like that. So, I see from that perspective, the five independent agencies working together better. As we sit and we have these meetings, everybody is very agreeable and amicable to, you know, the, the ideas and the thoughts that are being put out there and we're starting to make. In fact, I have a meeting tonight at seven o'clock, and, you know, we'll be pushing a couple of items forward that will be consistent on every company doing it the same way. So, I get what you're saying, and, you know, I'll be fair to everybody. You know, it's not like I just have a vested interest here and I won't take the other four into consideration. You know, so I think that's kinda what we're moving to. And what we'd like to do is get everybody on the same page. Makes things a lot easier.
Thank you.
All right, Matt. I, I think, you know, you and I know each other well enough. I don't have to ask you any questions at this time. I think, you know, actually, in the past, we've butted heads, but we've agreed to disagree, or we've worked out the differences. And at least we know where each of us stand.
Right.
So, but, all right, we'll go through these interviews and we'll make an appointment here soon.
Okay. Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Matt. And Mr. Barnhart, the way it works is, and every time, there's five fire departments and there's three representatives from the volunteer fire side. So, it's on a routinely scheduled. And right now, Beddington is on that schedule to be, have a, one of their members appointed to the board. And so, they need to give us three names, and then the county council picks the one out of the three.
What's the term?
It's a three-year, two, two-year, three-year. I'm sorry. But no, no more than a two, two term. And then you have to set out. All right. Next would be Clifton Reinhardt. Good morning, Clifton.
Good morning.
Same thing. Tell us a little bit, tell us about yourself, why you wanna serve, and, and give us a background, please.
My name's Cliff Reinhardt. I, my background, I've got about 30 years in fire service as a career and volunteer. I've currently been a volunteer at Beddington Fire Department for six years now. I, my current employment is, I work for U.S. Department of Transportation, and I'm a hazardous materials inspector.
Okay.
The reason why I wanna serve, I think a lot of the board I sat in front of last year when we interviewed for the last Fire Board position. But I wanna get involved. I moved to Berkeley County six years ago when I joined Beddington Fire Department. I like to be involved. I've seen the struggles and the, the different things that have happened over the last few years when it came to the fire fee and everything of that nature. And I think that, you know, I don't wanna reiterate everything Matt said, but we've had a lot of conversations and spoke at the firehouse. There's a lot of things that need to be done and can be done if presented the right way. I, like many of the other implants in the Eastern Panhandle, moved here for a reason. We like West Virginia. West Virginia's got very good laws. It's a little bit more conservative in nature than most of us that came from over on the other side of the river.
You're okay to say that here.
I'm trying to be a little bit PC in this. But, um, but one of the other things that I've seen in the last few years is, and it's very discouraging and frustrating, when I see all the out-of-state tags around me. And everybody moves here because they, for basically the same reasons. They want the lower taxes. They want the lower fees. They want everything. And then as soon as they get that, they want all the services that they had where they came from. I was a volunteer in PG County. I grew up in Carroll County in Maryland. I've seen high taxes. I've paid high taxes. I understand that when you don't pay those taxes, you can't get everything that you expected. So, with that, I think the, going forward, because probably the biggest thing is to move forward with fire fee increase and the expansion of the county fire service through Berkeley Fire and through the volunteer organizations working together to expand. I don't think that just having a fire fee increase to increase personnel is the answer. I do think that needs to happen by all means. But, you know, Matt touched on it, having a strategic plan going forward. Five years, I think, is a little short-sighted for, for a strategic plan with the growth that we're receiving in this county. It takes years to build a firehouse. And this county's not only short fire service personnel, whether it be volunteer or career, but we're short facilities to provide those services. There's a lot of places in this county where neighborhoods and townhouses seem like they're sprouting up quicker than Dollar Generals. They, we need to start looking at firehouses. And I don't think there's any volunteer agency or organization, any of the five in this county, that really think they've got the volunteer staffing to accommodate adding more firehouses. So, even though that addition to firehouses might need to be in conjunction with volunteer organizations for the control, I hate to say control, that's a bad way of putting it, for the, the ownership of those or, of those stations in their districts, there's definitely going to need to be some planning to figure out if we are going to five, 10 years from now have a firehouse in any number of places, out 45, up in Falling Waters, in 20's area. The thought needs to be there that when these stations go into service, granted, the newness of a new firehouse will have all kinds of volunteers there for about a month. And, but they're gonna need to be sustained. And I think with proper planning and a proper strategic plan there, before anything gets presented to the public for a fire service or a Fire Board or a fire fee increase, there's definitely gonna need to be some forethought, whether it be built into it to have automatic increases, however that could work, if that needs to be regulatory changes, or if that can be something built into it. But something needs to go forward, planning for the possibility of new firehouses, whether it's getting the capital now to be able to build stations and then be able to have staffing in them when they're opened. I am a volunteer. I would love to say that the volunteers could do it. We all know. I don't think there's a volunteer in this county that would ever say this county's not moving towards more of a career interface in with it. But that needs to be planned, and it needs to be planned well. And with the volunteers on board and the proper marketing, as Matt would say, as Matt was talking about, it needs to be presented. It needs to be presented in a way that it's palatable to the taxpayers. Because if we can't convince them that this is needed and that it's not gonna hurt like hell to get there, then it's not gonna happen. And I think that's gonna be our big, our big hurdle to get over, is getting everybody on board, having a very, having a good plan that everybody can understand and get behind to make this something the taxpayers will pay for and will support. A lot of them, they want the services, they just don't wanna come off the money for it. And I'm one of those people, and I'm sure everybody else in here, as much as you love the services, nobody likes giving away their money, especially to the government.
Well, one of the, one of the timelines, I gotta go back a little bit about with Matt's conversation earlier. One of the things is it's gotta be put on a referendum too. So, now you gotta hit the, the election cycle proper too. And that's, that's a year. That's a, that's a year to plan for that. Matter of fact, the deadline, which we sent the paperwork to the Fire Board a while back, the deadline has already surpassed in order to get a good campaign going. And, you know, I'm sitting there listening to you and Matt talking, one of the things that I was thinking of, I've always said, you know, in order to protect your family, to give it, you know, to, to have an additional assurance that your family member will be safe, right, is the cost of a cup of coffee per day. That's all it is. So, you know, I'm thinking ad campaign while you're talking is, okay, you're sitting there drinking a cup of coffee. But really, do you want the cup of coffee? You want your, your child to get out of the house safe. You know, it's not, it's not that, it's not that that's not happening, and no disrespect to anybody. But we all know that it would, with paid staff, it, it's gonna increase that percentage.
And, and I think that if you were to present to Fire Board and say, let's try to push out a fire fee increase right now, I think you could probably get a campaign to get some sort of increase for, if you presented it correctly and got it out there, you could probably do that quicker. You know, I would say maybe the next election cycle, you could push something like that. My thought is, though, is as much as I think you could push something for immediately, before I wanna, would wanna put any dollar amount on a fire fee increase, I would want to have the planning in place to know where we wanna be 10 years from now. I mean, obviously, five years and then 10 years. Because I do think we're gonna need more, we're gonna need career staffing, we're gonna need more firehouses. I wouldn't, I would hate to guess at how many firehouses, but I know with my experience, the size of this county, and, I mean, you're probably looking at in 10 years, if you wanted to protect this county properly, you're probably gonna need four or five more firehouses in this county to cover the buildup of the area. That might be a little high because some of the areas, when you get on the west side, are a little bit more rural. But, you know, they deserve fire protection too. And...
And a lot of that can be accomplished by the substations become a firehouse.
Yes, absolutely. And, and there are substations already. I mean, you know, 60's building their new station, 20 has got the 29 up by the airport. There are substations already, you know, 49's down there. And...
There's four substations.
And, and I know that like our substation, we utilize our substation, really, probably more than we utilize our main station. And that's not because it's in the best area. It's just because it's a much nicer place to sit at.
Well, for the ambulance authority, it's the hottest spot.
Yes. And that is a very, very busy angles. And honestly, not even, this is a Fire Board conversation. However, you know, I do work, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. I am a part-time employee with Berkeley County Ambulance Authority also. But that ambulance needs, should be, I mean, I know that via ambulance authority comment, that should be a 24-hour unit in that station. And there's just so much growth going on in this county. The services need to be expanded. I just think that when we, if we're gonna push out a fire fee increase as hard as it's gonna be and as much work as it's gonna be to get it through, the, the forward thinking to try to build in the, the different steps to make it to where five years from now, we're not having this conversation about fire fee increase again. It, I don't know all the legal and the state code when it comes to whether or not you can present a plan to have automatic increases in there.
I don't think so.
If you can't, that's a shame. But there, there ought to be something. And I think...
Especially on the fire side. It's the only one fee that you have to go have a petition or now a referendum. And there is no other fees that you have to have.
And if there's something that's difficult in there and that you can't work that, and I, like I said, I don't, I'm not, I don't know the county, the state code. But if it's something that, yes, five years from now, we have to look at another, then you might have to go after that higher fee at the beginning in order to build up the, the, you know, the cash on hand to be able to plan for that, we're gonna be able to build a firehouse in five years, or we're gonna have the extra money, funding to cover staffing until we can get another increase. Because granted, if you get $10, you don't have to spend $10 now. It would be great to have a reserve and say, okay, three years from now, this station's been upgraded, we've got facilities, now we can start looking at, we've got the ability, we've got the funding, that we can now transition into a 24-hour staffing, whether that's next year or five years from now. I, I do think that Fire Board and along with the fire departments, I think the support of everyone would be probably a pretty good tool if there was a unified fight to try to change state code. I know that the Berkeley County has made attempts and has worked with the state. But it's been, it, it's never, as far as I know, it hasn't had the support of the volunteer departments. And I think if you were to have the five volunteer departments in the county supporting a code change or regulatory change in Charleston, it would probably have a lot more teeth to it to have the entire county with all of the players involved supporting it. But in order to do that, I think you have to have a, a good plan and get everybody on board first.
All right, Mr. Barnhart?
Well, again, I wanna thank you for your interest and your thoughts on this. I mean, of the fire companies, two have been rebuilt. One is having the roof this week. Is that?
It'll be completed, the roof be completed this week. So... Actually have, Hedgesville has their station that's, what, 15 years old now? 20?
Is that old?
It's fif, over, it's, it's pushing, it's over 15 for sure.
South Berkeley's...
South Berkeley's three, uh, three years at the most. Baker Heights is building theirs. They just bought it, they're buying, they got it under contract for Beddington's new station.
Yeah.
Land. But, you know, one of the things that you say that I, I've said before too, and I think it's got to do with landmass, but Canal County's got 28 stations? 28 station? We have five. So, but...
And for the five new stations, guess where my fire service has to come from? Shepherdstown.
Well, you gotta live on a farm.
Well, I live off Route 45.
And you have a bridge anyway. But that's not there.
But, uh, my fire service is out of Shepherdstown.
Don't play with matches.
Yeah, really.
And, and with that being said, that's, you look at the area off of 45, and I, I know that this isn't the conversation area. At some point in time, there's, there ought to be a firehouse out that way. Whether it's, you know, the 45 is the dividing line between Baker Heights and Beddington, but neither one of the departments are really close to it. Shepherdstown's down the road. But, I mean, I've said since I moved here that, you know, running calls out off of 45 and Falls Cross Road, that's a hike.
Yes, it is.
And it's not a quick hike because it's, the roads, the back roads are, they might be okay to drive a Yugo or Prius down, but they'd be quite challenging putting a firetruck up and down. Not a whole lot of give room or a lot of forgiveness on the shoulders of our county roads. So, it would definitely, I think a firehouse out that way is going to be something that if a plan, a five or 10-year plan is in place, that is definitely one of those places that needs a firehouse.
Luckily, the county increase in population rate hasn't hit Route 45 because there's no utilities out there. So, that's one, but it will. Well, it's gonna be a while because...
All those farms are gonna turn into townhouses.
Well, you have to run the utilities out there. That's gonna cause serious busts.
All right. Councilman Delia?
Well, thanks for, um, thanks for plating for the position. Sounds like you've, you've been in here long enough to get your feet hold on, on some of the issues. So, so if I'm listening to you correctly, you're saying that this whole campaign should, should see a 10-year plan put together. And instead of looking at just staffing the, what we have currently with full-time firefighters, which is probably gonna be a $50 million 10-year plan, you're thinking $150 million 10-year plan to go after funding for that, to be able to build new firehouses and staff those as well?
If, if that's what needs to happen, I, I think putting a Band-Aid on the problem for what's going on today would be very short-sighted. And I think that as a Fire Board, to be responsible for the citizens, maybe not, I know currently, you're, we're only responsible to the citizens that live here today. But realistically, five, 10 years from now, there's gonna be a lot more citizens that are going to be in, if we don't look forward at new firehouses and future staffing, there, five, 10 years from now, we're gonna be having the exact same conversation, trying to figure out what we're gonna do to provide protection for... for all the new developments and everything else.
So, the, so the curious thing is, one of your statements was that you don't wanna pay no more either.
I don't, but it, but-
But so, so how do you, so how do you market such a large plan to the people of Berkeley County that don't wanna pay anymore? And I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that, that, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's gotta be a marketing scheme or scheme, a scheme, uh, what do you call it? A, a plan.
Plan.
I guess a marketing plan that, uh, that, that doesn't sound like, uh, some type of scheme, that it is a, a plan to bring full-time firefighting to serve every part of the county. Um, I know that, um, I know that a lot of people that come from across the river, um, can't believe that we're still dealing with volunteer firefighting in Berkeley County. Um, have no idea, I mean, people that have lived here for 10 years have no idea that, that there's volunteer firemen that, that are in Berkeley County. So, yeah, how do you, how do you, how do you, uh, how do you market that?
I really think that the best way to get someone to understand is having a good plan. I mean, if, if you can put together a plan and a strategy, the, the dollar amount, no matter what, is going to be something that you'll have, you have to justify every dollar that you're asking for. And if you can put out a strategic plan stating, this is what, this is what this increase is going to do over the course of five years, whether it be initially, this is gonna be the increase and it's going to fund this, and then the goal is, is, you know, within two years, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. You have a hard, I, I would have a hard time telling someone, and with me being from Beddington, I know the Beddington area and the development, development, you have a hard time telling someone in Falling Waters how you're gonna double their fire fee or whatever the, the increase may be, and not tell them that there's a plan for them to get improved protection. Um, and that would go with anyone in, as well. I mean, obviously, the people that live close to firehouses, putting, providing staffing or having a plan for beefing those stations up, is definitely something that you could easily sell to them. But it doesn't matter. You could put 30 paid men, paid firefighters in every one of our stations out in the county right now, and that is not gonna help someone off Grave Road or help someone back in the woods. Well, unless you staff the station back in the woods. But it's not gonna help them. You can put, 60 can have all the paid people they want. 40 can have all the paid people they want. But when it takes 10 or 15 minutes to get a fire truck to the house, whether it's career or volunteer, their house is still gonna burn down. So, there needs to be a plan to truly improve and, and expand the fire protection for the community. Uh, I, I'm not saying that what's here now wasn't adequate at some point in time, but when minutes count, it doesn't matter how many paid people are sitting at a station. If you're responding from Station 40 to off of, let's just say, the River Bend, it's gonna take 15 minutes for a fire truck to get there from any firehouse they come from, whether they're career or volunteer. So, I think having a plan to, to really make the county, to expand the fire protection in the county, is going to be one really good way to sell it. It's gonna sell it to, it's lowering insurance premiums, which is a big thing that would help with. It's, I mean, it's not a huge savings off your insurance premiums, but it might be enough to offset the fact that there's gonna be a fire fee.
It should.
It should.
Right, it should.
And that's a good thing, and that's a good selling point. But that's something that, developing a good plan and resources and a strategy and being able to get that out to the people before they have to walk in and cast their vote, that's going to be your way to make it palatable to people. They're gonna get safer community, better fire protection, and, you know, at the, they have the possibility of, or the possibility or should reduce insurance costs. And unfortunately, people don't really care until they need emergency services. They don't, they don't think about Sheriff's Office. They don't think about Fire EMS until they dial 911 and they're screaming for help, and then they wanna know why it took so long. So, reducing insurance costs and things of that nature is probably gonna be a pretty big thing to help people understand and help people wanna pass a fire fee increase.
Mr. Weddicker.
No questions other than, you know, you've explained pretty good on, on, you know, your thoughts about the system here in the county. And I think we're pretty much in, in all agreement with that. So, again, thank you for wanting to give back to your community and welcome to Berkeley County. If you're a short timer here, with six years is a nice time to have. Thank you.
Mr. Kokenhauer.
Almost didn't recognize you with your beard.
Santa Claus. I, I do the Santa Claus for Beddington, and I decided to actually try to see if I could do it.
Well, I think you're well on your way.
Yeah, it's, the weight's definitely well on my way.
You might as well start on the hair. The Santa Claus, I knew that kinda like.
I can't do anything about the hair. So, I, I have to dye the beard, but I'm gonna try to be a natural Santa Claus and then shave it off after Christmas.
I'll let mine go too, but then this week I had some meetings. I said, I'd better shave it off. I mean, it's about three, four weeks long.
That was kinda cruel, Eddie.
No, I've been honest.
He's got, by the time he puts the hat on and everything, he's got, he'll probably have a long hair in the back.
Your beard's on the way.
Yeah.
No doubt.
Uh, Cliff. It's, my, my thing is the same as, as was with Matt when he came up here. You can, you can get all your, your SOPs in line for your different agencies to follow on the fire ground, but I value, because I've been here a long time. There's a different culture in, in each one of these firehouses. And, and that's a cool thing. It's not a bad thing. It's a cool thing. That they all operate a little bit differently. You know, they have a different thought process. Uh, so my only thing is that each agency be treated fairly. You know, that when, when they come before you and with their specific needs, uh, that if you have doubts, you know, reach out and try to understand exactly where they're coming from because they do have a different thought process at, at each different department. And that, that's what makes them unique, you know? It's not just green fire trucks and yellow fire trucks and orange fire trucks. You know, they, they truly do have a, a different culture. And, um, I just, I just ask that they be treated fair that when they come before you, if you afford them that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Cliff, and one of the things, um, that you put, you emphasized a lot on, and I, I can't agree with you more. I mean, I've, I've said that too, is additional fire halls. I mean, first of all, we have to utilize our substations. Uh, and Beddington does utilize theirs. Um, but we do have two of them that's pretty much vacant most of the time. Um, and I think one of the people that, one of the areas that's underserved by far, especially with the population base, is the Woods and Sleepy Hollow and those areas. Um, when you talk about new fire halls or additional fire halls, that's a whole different fire station and makeup. It's not gonna fall under, you, you visualize those new fire halls falling under the umbrella of an existing fire hall or brand-new stations?
The, a lot of that, I, you know, that some of that would be research and how things happen. Because I know that each department is divided into a, into an area and the fire chief for each district is responsible by law for that fire department's area. So, some of that, I, I do envision that if there were a new station being built, that if, and I'll just use, throw this out there because, you know, well, out 45.
That's you.
Or, or Falling Waters.
Or Grave Road, right?
Um, I, I do envision that under the current legislature or the current regula- regulations and statutes for fire departments, that that would have to fall under the current fire department that maintains that area. But I, I've been involved with, I was a career firefighter in Frederick, Maryland. And the, the Frederick, Maryland, when I started there and went through the academy 20-some years ago, was almost identical to Berkeley County, the way it worked. When I started working there, it was, I worked for Department of Fire and Rescue Services. We fell under the county's domain. We worked in volunteer firehouses, and we fell under the authority of the volunteer firehouses. They controlled who drove their equipment. They drove, they controlled the firehouse. They controlled everything. We were staffing in their firehouse. Almost identical to the way it is here. Um, there was a little bit of difference with, there was a tax instead of a fire tax, instead of a fee, that, um, but we fell under their, their command structure. And Frederick County did the same thing at Berkeley County, what I'm talking about. They built additional firehouses. And all of those firehouses were built by the county. Um, I believe pretty much every firehouse in Frederick that's been built probably the last 20-some years has been owned by the county. And all of the departments fell under the purview of a volunteer organization. You know, they built the firehouse and it said, United Hose Company, and it's Spring Mill Station. And on the signs out front, it said, United Fire Company. Then underneath of it, it said Frederick County Fire Rescue. Completely staffed by paid people in partnership with the volunteer organization. Um, in doing so, it, it made it to where obviously the volunteers that lived in that area, because at some point in time, that was covered by different volunteer firehouses, they could still run out of that station. They could still work with it. However, the county staffed it 24 hours a day. The county maintained it. Um, over time, which I can foresee probably happened here the same way as it happened there, the county ended up having a fire chief. The county has battalion chiefs. The county has captains, lieutenants, and everything else. The county has kinda dovetailed with the volunteer system, and now it, it, they all kinda work together. A volunteer fire chief can be in command of the fire or the county battalion chief can be in command of the fire in that jurisdiction. And, and that's happened. Um, but that was due to a jurisdictional issue at the time. The county was not and could not be designated as their own separate fire organization. So, they kind of piggybacked. They provided the service, but under the umbrella of whatever jurisdiction they fell in. And as of right now, that's probably how it would happen. That's from my take on how the system's set up. That's probably how it would happen here. Um, I also, as in my younger days, volunteered in PG County, which I hope to, other than passing through in 95, I don't ever wanna be there again. But it was the same way. They started off as volunteer organizations. The county started putting career firefighters in stations. Now, it's turned into, 30 years later or whatever, it's now you've got volunteer stations and then you've got career stations. It's just, it's kinda the natural progression of things. And I think that's the way the progression's gonna happen here. Um, Montgomery County went through the same, the same transition from volunteer to career. Um, it's just, it's gonna happen. It's just trying to, I think, forcing it too quickly. It can be done gradually and a lot less painful. If you, if you move in slow and you do it with everybody on board and everybody working together, I don't think it really matters at the end of the day what name is on the sign, whose name's on the top and whose name's on the bottom. We're there to provide a service. And with volunteer system, it's harder and harder to get volunteers. There's absolutely no incentive for, I mean, some of the, the other states, and I hate to, I, because I don't wanna be in Maryland, but they've got a lot of incentives to volunteer in Maryland. They've got a retirement program for volunteers. They've got tax credits. This state sucks to, to try to get people to volunteer as firefighters. There is zero incentive. I think the only incentive that you can say that you have as a volunteer in West Virginia is if you die, you get like a $10,000 life insurance. And that sure as hell ain't an incentive for me. Uh, so, that's something I would love to see. I, I think it would be an absolutely spectacular thing that if putting a fire fee together, there was some way to figure out a way to build an incentive in to try to help people wanna be volunteers. I don't think that would fix the problem and say, well, hell, we don't need paid guys anymore. But it might ease the transition over that five, 10-year, 15-year plan that if you could make some incentives to try to get some more people through the door to donate their time or volunteer or however you could get it, I think it would help with the transition. It would help with, if you did build new firehouses and you did have some sort of incentive for people to volunteer, maybe it would make it to where you wouldn't have to make that real hard hit of putting five paid guys in a station right off the bat. You might be able to start off with two or three or whatever the, the minimum staffing was determined needed to be. And you might be able to have those supplemental volunteers if you could, if. I don't know the answer to that. I know that there's, there's different ways other communities do it with, whether it be the retirement plans like Maryland with LoSAP or whether it be a paid-on-call system. There are ways to try to give some incentives for volunteers. And there, that's not there now. And as much as I see the future as being more career 10 years, 15 years from now than it is volunteer, it's gonna be painful in the middle. If you, it's either gonna be a real hard hit at the beginning or there's, something's gonna need to be done to help, to help transition the, the program over.
Okay, um, all right. So, I, I, that's more of a statement, not a question. Uh, in order to get paid firefighters in each of the five main stations and the substations, three back then, now there'll be four here shortly, the three, you gotta quadruple the fee to keep the, the, the structure that's there today. So, it would, it would quadruple to do that. Just to give you all, give you guys an idea. The numbers don't lie.
I, I would fully expect that it would be some very high increase that would need to be pitched and sold. And, you know, I would love to see the numbers and how, because if that's just staffing costs, there's a lot of other costs that go involved with it. Um, truly, I think that if we're, I mean, and I'm not part of Berkeley Fire and never have been, never will be. But I, I've looked at career systems in Greece. Um, with my experience, I hired in Frederick County as a paid firefighter, and I was required to be a firefighter in an EMT prior to me ever starting. Um, it took one lawsuit saying that they were EEO, and that was no longer a requirement. And from what I've seen, I don't know if, I don't know, you probably know, uh, Berkeley Fire claims to be EEO or an equal opportunity employer, but they're only one lawsuit away from proving they sure as hell aren't an equal opportunity employer. Because you have to be qualified and trained and have a whole list of training before you can get hired. And, I mean, maybe they have some sort of exceptions to say that if somebody was great, they'd send them through all the training, but it hasn't happened yet. And that will be something that comes up in the future as, as the fire service grows and more career people going. There's gonna need to be training costs. There's gonna need to be academy costs. And that's gonna be a huge cost because now you're not only putting people through training and you're not getting anything for them during the six months or four months of them getting qualified as a firefighter. I would love to think as an EMT at some point in time because I think it's an absolute shame that we have firefighters that aren't, that aren't all qualified as EMTs. I think that's a complete disservice to the citizens of this county. Um, there aren't too many jurisdictions anywhere, probably in this country, that don't require the firefighters to have EMT training at a minimum. Um, but now you're paying for people. You gotta fill shifts when people are training those people. And, I mean, that's a, it's a huge additional cost that I think would also need to be figured in. Which is, once again, why I think that the plan needs to be thought out before fire fee is truly increased. All of those variables need to be calculated into it and a good plan developed to get, to get that stuff covered. It's gonna be a huge expense.
All right. Thank you. I'm running behind schedule a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you for replying.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you.
All right, William. Is, pronounce your last name Zions?
Zions.
Zions?
Yep, Zions.
Thank you.
Just like sounds, just like regular sounds.
All right, all right. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I threw up around, uh, fire hall all my life. As a kid, got drug out in the middle of the night by my dad to go roll hoes.
Uh-huh.
Um, time I moved up here was 1985. Few years later, I joined Beddington. I'm going on my 30th year at Beddington as a volunteer there.
Uh-huh.
I enjoyed it, never looked back at it. Uh, I've worked for Engine, when we had Engine 90, worked there. Then we went to Berkeley Fire, I worked-
That's still a good engine, isn't it?
Huh?
That's still a good engine, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. It's still there. It's still there.
They're gonna kick that thing to the- Kick that thing to the curb, fifteen-year guy.
We had a Cat Ninety then, you know, we was in there, so. Then we got the other engines, so you know. But I've been at Bettington that long, I've served on the board, been a chief line officer, I'm a current captain right now. Uh, probably the longest captain that has served at Bettington. I probably did twenty years as a captain there. You know, so, but I'd like to see how this fire board operates. I mean, we all know we need a fee increase, what needs to be done. We know a plan needs to be rolled out. It ain't going to happen overnight. You know, it's going to take a time. But what can we do today? You know, we have paid staffing out there today. Yes, not in all stations, but that's going to happen here shortly. So how are we going to save money now? You know, to currently that we're using taxpayers' money at the fireboard. Okay, so we know we need a fee increase, but we need to look how we're going to cut costs now. We know we need stations, yes, we're on a roll to build a new station for us. Okay, so that's going to happen. But in the long run, do we need fifteen other brand-new main fire departments? Can we go under an umbrella of something? You know, it don't need to be a Taj Mahal fire hall, but two bays on it, living quarters, kitchen, you know, it's an outstation. You have one main station. But I think new ideas to the fireboard would be a help. You know, just, I'd like to learn myself how this works. I've been in the fire service long enough, served on Bettington board, that's totally different. We deal with taxpayers' money, I deal with that. At the ambulance authority now as the logistics coordinator for them. Just when I took that position, I blew my left knee out building a fish pond. Not one that you can actually, but like a koi pond. So I got, they, uh, made a position for a logistics coordinator, I took that over. Saved them over $60,000 in the first four months. You know, that's dealing with ordering supplies, everything. And that's something the fire board needs to look at. Because every department need to have fifteen different accounts over places. We don't have the fundraising like we used to, especially with COVID. You know, we're trying to do online sales, raffles, they're slowing down, inflation. You know, so we need to make every dollar that we're getting right now do this fire fee count. You know, I'm for paid staffing. I'm fortunate, I live two miles from each of Bettington Station, right in the middle. But my house catches on fire, I don't know what department's going to show up. We don't have staffing. Is sixty going to come? Eventually, but how long am I going to have to wait for a truck? And that's what the citizens are looking at now. So we know we need an increase, but like I said, it's all about money. It's going to take time, but what can we do now to help further the cause of getting these paid personnel in all the stations that we have right now?
All right, Mr. Barnard.
Again, uh, applaud your time and service and your efforts. And continue on, you know, continue what you're doing.
I'll do it as long as I'm able to, you know. I mean, we've got a different generation these days.
Yep.
You don't get the volunteers like when I started.
Well, only because they don't have the time to afford to be able to do it.
Exactly.
Today, I, I, I say this all the time about the volunteers. Number one, we have to educate the public about a volunteer. People don't understand that they volunteer a hundred percent of their time and don't get anything back in return, period, right? Other than, other than helping people, that's, that's all, that's it. Um, and a lot of people don't know that. They don't, I, I talked to a friend not too long ago who said volunteers a hundred percent voluntary. He said, you mean they don't get nothing, they don't get paid or no, nothing?
A lot of people in this county don't know that we're volunteers.
So I think that needs to be the first campaign is what does a volunteer firefighter do for you? Right? Um, and, um, and, and I've said that in today's economics, it takes the husband and the mother working at least one job apiece, if not two jobs apiece, the kids, you know, it just, it, it's just so costly. You know, for, for, to raise a family these days. And I think that contributes on a whole another subject, that contributes to some of the situations we have about our youth. Right? Because the parents are trying to do so much. And I always say, you, you firefighters and firewomen that go to the firehouse, your kids go with you. You know, that's why it's generational, uh, because you grew up in a firehouse. But anyways, Dan?
Well, thanks for, thanks for the interest, thanks for wanting to get involved. Um, obviously you've been at it a good while and care about, a, a lot about what goes on and should have a really good grasp of the situation. Uh, I appreciate that. I do, I did, did you say you spoke of your father dragging you out in the middle and making, grinding up hoses?
Oh yeah.
Was, was those good memories?
Sometimes, but when it was like twenty, twenty degrees and you got to roll up hose, yeah, it was. Because I, it was a small town, but you know, it was all volunteer. He'd come in and get you and then you still had to go to school.
Did, did you, do you have children?
I have one, but he, uh, he lives out in Omaha now. He went a whole different way than computers.
Well, I was just curious if you drug him out?
No, he didn't want anything to do with it. I mean, I would take him to the fire hall.
Did you have an option, did you have an option when you were a kid?
Uh, no. There was no option, you're going now or I'm going to take you with me.
But, but, and I was thinking about that when you said that. Maybe that's why we have the difference because, you know, a lot of, a lot of people that are in it today got in it because of their parent and it wasn't a choice to get in it. And at some point you learn the value of what you're doing just because you're doing it, you know? So who knows, maybe, maybe that's something, but I, 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 it, as I'm, as I'm listening to you talk, it just seems to me that we should be able to figure out, you know, this is, this problem has reached every municipality in, everywhere, way before it reaches counties. And, and I'm sure municipalities have information that we could find out that, that says, you know, that, that they, somebody tried to, um, give incentives and those type of things and did that increase the volunteers? Did it, or is this, the only way to do it is to get paid staff and do it that way, so?
I mean, I have to look at every option. I mean, we don't have many volunteers left in this county.
Right.
And, you know, as we all get older, slowing down, I mean, I, you know, it's, uh, then you just start, now you don't get replaced, that's the thing. You got to replace them somehow.
Well, we can't even find workers now.
Right, exactly.
I'm, I'm thinking it must have been a mass alien attack and they took a bunch of them. Because I don't know where they all went. There used to be all kinds of work, construction workers and there's none now.
Oh no.
Okay.
Mr. Reddicker.
Yes, sir. I, you know, you, the big thing is volunteers right now, that's for sure. I usually get voluntold, so, you know, as, as growing up, I was sort of the same thing. My dad never went to the firehouse, but there was always work to do and we did it.
Oh yeah.
But again, thank you for your, for your willingness to, to give your time to this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gokenhar.
In fairness, because I've asked the other two, discussed it with the other two, that each one of these agencies, they are different. Every fire department in this county is different, whether it's Martinsburg, the DA, Suffolk, Big Ice, they're all different. And they all have a little bit of a different thought process. But it's critically important that when they come to the fireboard, that they be treated fairly. And that's what I ask is that, whether it's Back Creek Valley making a request or Bettington's making the same request, that Back Creek be treated as fair as Bettington.
Well, and I think that's what it should be, is just because I'm Bettington's representative does not mean that, hey, we're going to get all the money this time, because we're hanging for anybody else. Wanting, might need something else that we don't need, thirty, Back Creek. It's like Mr. Gokenhar said, we all operate differently. I've been around with enough of these people through my thirty years to know how almost every station operates. You know, it's just trained with them and everything, and he's right, they're, we're all different. And you got to treat every department different, but equal. If there's no, no being equal between each department and trying to benefit your department, then it ain't going to work because it's going to happen to the next department. Then whoever turns next, if it be Hedgesville, they're going to get everything, Bettington's going to get screwed. So you got to be equal across the board.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's, it's crazy the way it's set up because in, in theory, according to Robert's rule, you wouldn't be voting when you're in firehouse. You know, it's, it's, it's cra, it's, it's pretty wild. Um, well, uh, William, I appreciate, um, you applying. I think we have three good applicants here. Uh, appreciate each and every one of you, um, for applying. We'll make a decision here in the next week or two. Um, and I think, uh, any, any of you three would be good candidates for the fireboard. Uh, uh, we all know that there's, there's some things there that, that has to be attended, you know, we, it, but it's a, as we've known in the past, there has to be grassroots. And I really think the grassroots has to start at the volunteer level. You know, we, we cannot go out and campaign. First of all, I was, I was the one that was wrong on when, when I received letters from these volunteer fire stations saying they can't get out the door to, to do the call volume. I thought that the, the, that, when they gave us this, the letter to the county council and addressed to me, the president, they were passing the torch over to us to be responsible. But in reality, to each and all of you, I know you all understand this, the, the liability falls back to the chief of that department.
Correct.
Right? Um, so, you know, that, that kind of told me that, hey, you know, we, we need to give this back to the chiefs of the, of the fire department. Um, so I think, I think the, the grassroots has to, to start with the volunteers of, of saying, hey, you know, we love what we do, uh, but unfortunately, we can't continue to do what we used to do in today's world.
Oh yeah, and if we don't support it, and I go out here and talk to you, 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 or anybody, say, hey, we're going to raise your fire fee up $300. Hell with that, you know? Well, wait a minute, don't you volunteer and you ain't supporting it? Then they ain't going to support it. So you got to have, like you said, right there.
Right, and, and, and the timeline of this is, and that's why it was so important for us, Alan, myself and Eddie went around the timeline. We, we, when we went around to the stations, we said it was going to be a minimum of three-year turnaround. And when you do it, you got to do it throughout the county. You know, you can't do one area that's asking for it and not the other because as you know, Baker Heights is traveling throughout the whole county trying to get to places when they have to. Um, but I appreciate you applying, um, and we'll try to make a decision within another week or two.
All right, I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you, and every one of you. All right, next on our agenda is Jill Burkhart and Bobby Miller, Stormwater Management Issues, Spring Hill Farm subdivision. Good morning.
President, President Copenhagener, Councilman, Administration, and Audience.
Well, first.
Good morning.
First.
Congratulations.
Congratulate you on Nurse of the Year?
Uh, West Virginia Nurse of the Year.
Yes.
I guess there didn't, there wasn't any more applicants, I don't know what happened.
Congratulations.
I'm, I'm humbled, thank you so much. Um, for you guys that don't know me, I'm Bobby Miller. I live at six six seven Cuswell Road, which is actually west directly across from the site in question. Lived there thirty-eight years, never had any water. Let me back up and be totally transparent. My husband pulled some bushes out beside our house one year and didn't put the pipe back down into the ground and the water came out of the, um, pipe directly down into the basement. So I had probably a half inch of water, probably that much in a, um, um, shop vac. So I've never had water, I don't even have a sump pump, I have a sump pump hole and I have a connection, but I've never had to submerge a pump. So, um, I want to give you a little history on our road. Cuswell Road is the closest thing to Mayberry that you'll ever get. Um, if our neighbors are sick, we always make sure that they're fed and medicines. And we've even had to feed chickens to people that have left for vacation to feed their chickens. Um, a month ago, two months ago, um, my sister's neighbor went on vacation. She mowed the yard, made sure she, he had the mail. This is how it is out there. So it's not anything with the reference of building, planting houses instead of trees. Sure, everybody would love to see the apple tree like they were. But my father always told us we had two decisions when this happened. You could either buy it or move and don't be the wort on the butt of progress. So we're not. Um, I, um, jumped the fence to vote for every one of you guys up there and for the reason as these. Number one, all of you are hard workers, I know your history. Number two, integrity. And number three, I know that each and every one of you love this county like I do and have an interest in it. So have all faith in knowing that this problem will be resolved and that it will, will be reassessed and a solution made. Thank you. Any questions?
No, Jill, I've known you for quite a while.
Bobby?
I'm sorry.
Well, they're covered up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I'm not sorry for that, I am a mask advocate, but I'm living with my ninety-seven-year-old mother right now.
Well, Bobby, I've known you.
For her protection.
Right, I've known you for quite a while, I'm sorry. Um, and, um, um, we do take everything very seriously, so. And I know that Cuswell Lane, I think DOH is actually looking at that, I understand, because there is no ditch lines out there. There's no way to transfer water from one side to the other or anything else of, of that nature. And I know that Cuswell Lane is right at the base of the mountain as well, so, um, naturally you have probably a lot of water runoff coming off the mountain. At least that, all that area does out there.
On the west side, we have a ditch that Dad dug years ago before there was stormwater management.
Okay.
Because the earth was disturbed, um, up on the mountain.
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
As far as getting the water on that side, the west side.
The ditch is doing a good job.
It is, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Um, Jill has stats and I might have to go because I'm still working.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All right, Jill, how you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
To all of you and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you today. Um, as Bobby said, she lives at six six seven Cuswell Lot Road and I live at seven eleven. Our property's adjoining and we're next to our neighbors. On September twentieth of twenty twenty, they began clearcutting approximately four thousand trees across the road from our houses. Um, I was told by the Realtor at that time that they would not begin building houses for at least a year, but that didn't happen. They began right away, which is okay. But because I was concerned, I called DOH. Um, and this was last September. Finally, after many calls to several people, DOH did shallow trench the road across from us. However, um, driveways were then installed for the new building sites and there were no culverts put in. So I talked with the contractor who actually did the driveways and he said that culverts should have been installed. Consequently, water flows in the shallow trench until it reaches, um, a driveway entrance that was installed and then it pools in ponds on the road, creating a dangerous situation for automobiles and this winter, I'm sure for ice. When it rains hard, mud and water flow from several of the sites onto Cuswell Road and also onto my property and that of my sister. It also pools in ponds all along the road. I contacted Berkeley County Stormwater Management and sent pictures of the water problems to them on March twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. I then began researching and obtained the following information. The original plat was recorded at the clerk's office on eighth twenty-two nineteen seventy-four. The replat was submitted on behalf of Butler's West LLC, who owned the property on January seventeenth of twenty twenty, four years after the passing of the stormwater ordinance. According to Article Three, Stormwater Management Program Procedures and Requirements, page eleven and twelve, unless otherwise specified by the ordinance, the land disturbance permits consist of the following. Erosion and sediment control plan, stormwater management plan, maintenance. with Article 6A, and West Virginia Department of Highways permit. Most stormwater management program procedures and requirements relative to bonding and the required plan were followed. Before it was approved, there were several noncompliant issues with the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance of 2009. Several of the comments under notes written on the replat were addressed by a letter dated December 30th, 2020 from the Planning Commission staff, but number eight was not addressed in this correspondence. Under notes number eight, handwritten on the replat, is, as I quote, "Stormwater management is the responsibility of the lot owner and may be required at building permit applications submitted if proposed land disturbance exceeds 5,000 square feet or more of impervious space." A letter was also sent to Gregory Yerbalinsky, who is the land surveyor, by Mr. Sandsbury, who was the county engineer at that time, on January the 7th, 2020, and he did note the stormwater responsibility to the land surveyor. At no time, however, was the requirement for stormwater management and soil erosion addressed by anyone. This should never have been approved without the ordinance's requirements, and this was the beginning of nonenforcement of the stormwater ordinance. The replat was signed by five persons: the developer, the realtor, president of the Planning Commission, a witness, and one other person, and it was approved on February the 3rd of 2020. The stormwater ordinance was never addressed prior to the approval by the planning commission, and in addition, as I said earlier, bonding requirements were not there. The ordinance also states on page 16 that all stormwater management plans shall be appropriately sealed and signed by a professional engineer in adherence to all minimal standards and requirements pertaining to that profession in accordance with West Virginia Code, Chapter 30. And again, this was not followed. Since March, WVDEP, county engineering, and stormwater district MS4 staff have met with the builder several times, and also at least one time with the realtor who sold the property and DOH. There is no question that developers, realtor, and builders involved in this situation have been aware of the regulations and their need to implement the regulations from the beginning and for some time. Since early spring, these are the things that I've done to alleviate the problem and to protect my property. I had a berm installed at the end of my driveway. At times, the mud and water were so great that I purchased several quick dams and placed them at the end of the driveway. I've purchased 20 40-pound sandbags and have carried and placed them to the end of my driveway when it is called for storms on several occasions. Trust me, that was quite a feat by myself. I've purchased flood insurance. I built a dirt bank across the front of my house and that of the neighbors on the other side, not my sister's, to keep water from flowing on both of us. And I planted it with grass and granules to hold the soil and stop the water and the mud from the house directly across the highway, the road being built. I've installed cameras on my house so that I can view my property when I'm away, which is quite often, and if storm occurs, so that I can ask for assistance if needed. You have the pictures and phone review, and at some point, did she give them to you? Yes. I think that I had paper copies. Did Penny give them to you? Okay. I've contacted.
I'm sorry, it wasn't your local, your reading, it wasn't getting provided for your reading, so.
Right, right. Yeah, but what happened?
Yeah, okay. I gave her five copies. I've contacted WVDEP, WVDOH, Stormwater Management, Berkeley County Planning and Engineering, Berkeley County Legal Counsel, Senator Craig Blair, and now you folks regarding these concerns relative to the mud and water that's being deposited from the building sites, not only on my property and my sister's, but all along Cuswell Road. Like frankly, it's my understanding that it is illegal to have mud leave a property, especially flowing onto roadways and onto property that belongs to others. My purpose today is not to point fingers. That is not why I'm here. My purpose is to try to resolve this issue for my sister, myself, and others who live on Cuswell Road, in addition to any other landowners who may find themselves in similar situations throughout the county. In researching this situation, I found that there are similar cases in which our county has failed to enforce its own regulations. It appears that there is a systemic problem that exists and needs to be addressed. It's imperative that regulations are followed equitably and that persons are treated fairly and honestly relative to regulations and processes in our county. Whether this was pushed through or folks were pressured to appease with the loudest voice as a favor to friends or family, to support a business associate or a relationship, or whether it was simply an unintentional misstep, whatever the reason, it doesn't matter. The ordinance, if it had been applied fairly and equitably, as it should have been from the very initial step, this situation would have been taken care of at the beginning of the process, as, as is dictated by the ordinance, not trying to fix it nine months later after the lots have been sold and building has begun. This ordinance was approved in 2016, and the requirements were not a surprise to many of the players in this situation. Additionally, it's my understanding that lot owners are not aware of what was written on the replat and what their responsibility may be as a result. In fact, landowners, the lot owners, were not giving, given a copy of the replat. They were sold property without knowledge of notes that were written on the replat and what their responsibility was and is, which is quite unfortunate, unsuspecting to them buyers or lot buyers. Not correcting the situation, first of all, creates precedent for others to act in the same manner, creating inequities and unfair treatment to those who abide by the ordinance. Number two, it puts Berkeley County in an unfavorable light relative to following West Virginia Code and other regulations as noted in Section G, Page 5 of the ordinance. It creates hard feelings: homeowners, landowners, builders, when the regulations aren't followed, and most importantly, it creates major water and sediment issues that should not be a problem to begin with. As a result, I firmly believe that one has a complaint, one should also propose solutions. Consequently, I propose the following, consider it, the following for your consideration and action. Number one, first and foremost, assure that Berkeley County staff, council, and county departments follow and enforce regulations for all who seek to develop property in Berkeley County, and that all requirements are met as outlined in detail in the ordinance, regardless of why it occurred. Assure that all applicants and any entity proposing any land disturbance activities follow the same ordinance and regulations, no matter who they are or where they live. Enforce the ordinance on Cuswell Road now by requiring the homeowner, I'm sorry, the homeowners, builder, developer, county, or combination of those to actually provide the stormwater plan that should be done and the implementation of that plan. Stormwater tax could possibly even be used to facilitate this process. I understand that developing a written plan after the fact, but implementation is possible right away. Develop a, number four, develop a quick turnaround timeline for implementation, which does follow the ordinance's guidelines. As I said earlier, it's almost nine months since the beginning of this. And please, assure that this doesn't happen again, not only to those of us on the receiving end of the violations, but also so that it does not happen again to some unknown or unsuspecting lot owner or buyer. Regulations are written for all of us to abide by, and they must be followed. I do have additional specific details, I have several videos, and I have additional information, but in the interest of time, I believe that you understand the situation, and pictures speak for themselves, and I don't know where the pictures are. I gave them to Penny when I walked in. I think they speak for themselves. And finally, I would like to thank those of you who are here today, who have graciously and kindly assisted me and helped me with the research and the information that made it possible for me to address this situation. And I do understand that there has been some movement toward enforcement of the ordinance on Cuswell Road, and I greatly appreciate all who are now working to help get this resolved. My expectation is that it will be resolved very soon, and I know, as my sister said, all of you have the integrity and you live in Berkeley County, and we all want the same thing. I would be happy to entertain any questions, and I met at county and state staff with you also, who could be addressed for questions, and I thank you very much for having me here today.
Yeah, Jill, I, just real quick, one of the things that we, we talked about was the, the builder or someone said that they need to be culverts in each driveway. Unfortunately, when the state road doesn't have a ditch line, if you put a culvert in a driveway, it actually just fills up with silt and it doesn't do any purpose at all.
Then I know I've talked with him, I do understand that, Mr. Copenhagen.
And all the, all the, all these would have to have a highway entrance permit from the state of West Virginia, which would tell you right on the permit whether there's a culvert required or not.
Initially, they were asked to have a culvert, and then when they came and looked, they didn't put the culvert in. I was giving you the information from the contractor who put it in just because I felt that he had some good general knowledge about that sort of thing.
Can I ask, I'll ask that question since you know the neighbors and because I'll, I mean, it seems like all the players are here, so I'll just call them into a meeting if they have the availability of their time after our meeting and we'll get started on this. But is there any, if this, if the state road came out, which I understand, somebody told me, maybe it was you, Eddie, or somebody told me that, maybe it was Brian, that the state road was going to get ready to come out there and do some work, which I would suppose ditch line work. The only way to take, I mean, there, there's several different ways. I mean, there's the volume of water. If the water's always done this, coming off, even off the orchard, has it ever done that?
It has done it, but not recently.
Okay.
When they graded the road, probably eight years ago, whenever it would storm really hard, water would come. But on my sump pump, in the last eight, 10 years, it's never run, maybe three times when we had that 10-year or 100-year storm. In the last five months, my sump pump has run at least once a month, sometimes longer.
Okay.
So the volume of water and the mine has never been an issue with Mr. Copenhagen until the building sites.
All right.
And if you look at the, the pictures, I think they speak for themselves in terms of the volume of water.
Sure, sure. And the volume of water, again, I'm not, I'm, I'll, will work at this pretty, pretty hard on trying to get some type of, uh, solution to the situation, but during construction, they should contain the water.
They did not.
Right?
There was no containment whatsoever, and I know that the MS4 staff has been there, engineers have been there, and they can attest to that.
Yeah.
And they have been told to do that several times, as recently, and I, and I would really like for you to address them because they have more information than I do.
Well, again, I'll, I'll address them in a meeting here very soon today.
Okay.
And then, and then the, the other thing is, is naturally, there's, there's ground disturbance that creates additional water runoff. Once the, once everything gets stabilized again, it will actually help correct the problem, but at the same time, the problem, the, the, the water running down the driveway won't be caught in the grass, you know? It's very hard. So, but we'll, we'll talk here before, well, here, if they're available, we'll, by start the conversation around 1:00.
That would be great. I really appreciate it. And I just want to reiterate, I understand all of the things that you have said. I've done my homework pretty well. I have talked with Senator Blair. I do know about the runoff. I, I've also talked with them, they have some schematics that they looked at to try to redirect the water. They're gonna be working hopefully with DOH. But the problem is, from the very beginning, this should have been addressed, and I don't want you to please forget that.
Right.
This is an issue that should not have happened to me or to anybody else in this county because of, I don't know the reason. As I said, I'm not pointing fingers. The fact is, it did happen, and I hope that you will ensure and do your best to make sure this doesn't happen to someone else again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate anything you can do to help with this at this point. Please don't hesitate to get back to me or to have your staff get back to me anytime. And again, I thank everyone who's here today.
All right. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Anybody have any statements?
I guess I think that the silt is definitely an issue. I mean, water runoff is, is going to happen because that's the natural flow, but the silt is definitely an issue. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be mud run down the road.
Yeah, it is. It is an issue. And, and I thought that hopefully, as things went on, and that it would be contained, there would be something to update it. Nothing's happened, and in fact, I think that there's been some resistance on the part of folks to, to really address it, not, not here, not your staff. I don't mean that, but in terms of the folks who are building and working on the works. So.
Mr. Copenhagen.
Yes, sir. I, I've been in contact with Mr. Burkhardt several different times over her issue. I actually went and visited his site, and, I mean, it's, it's absolutely true. There are issues out there. The last time, which was probably a couple of weeks ago, I had contacted Mr. Keller, Curtis Keller, and asked him to get a full meeting together with, with Brian, with Zach, Anthony, I'm sorry, Keith, and DOH, and everybody came to the table, with the exception of DOH. These guys understand the problem. They were asked to solve the problem, and there's still one player that we need at the table, I think, to help solve this problem.
Yeah, I mean, being the builder myself, I know in my head how to fix the problem. One of the things is, is ditch lines, there's a serious problem out there. I know it is. My, my question was, Jill and Bobby, if, if the state road wants to come out there and ditch liners, is there some way that somebody would give an easement to get the water to where naturally it wants to go?
Actually, Mr. Copenhagen, I believe Zach has some schematics that show some ways that the water could go.
Okay.
And certainly, we would be willing to entertain.
I mean, that's the way the water's going now, and it always has went, so even downstream, somebody may.
And actually, the water on down Cuswell Road from our property is expelled out onto our property again, but at this point, there are no houses there, and it's not causing a major issue.
Well, it ends up in Tuscarora, I'm sure, right?
Right.
Yeah. And that's all Burkhardt.
It is.
The land of the Burkhardts.
Yes. And we want to protect it as best we can.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. All right. Are y'all available to meet at 12:45?
Mr. President, just wanted, and I appreciate you coming first, you built an air speaking up. Your staff has been aware of this issue for a while. I know Brian and Anthony are trying to take legal in this, and they've got Zach and Keith involved. They've met with the builder, so I would encourage you to meet with, with this group because they have genuinely been working on a solution.
Solution.
Solution, so. And, and no one has gotten any different treatment than anyone else in the county. That's one of the things that we are particularly careful about, and nothing has been done with this builder that we haven't expected and yet have been done.
All right. Eddie, you're available for that meeting too?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Combs, you've been waiting very patiently back there. Next on our agenda is Donald Combs, funding lost by VFD due to the COVID. I guess you're taking, talking about South Berkeley.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir. First of all, my thanks to the President and the Council to hear our complaints.
I'll be done, hey.
Hey, Brian.
Brian, y'all, I'll be done at about 12:45. All right.
We'll meet in the big conference room down the hall. The Council's conference.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry, Mr. Combs.
That's no problem. Our Fire Department, you know, has done a lot of fundraising for the past year. Our fire department, you know, has done a lot of fundraising for the past year. We put $150,000 of our own money into that fire station, and we thank you for all your help that you did too. We was told that there was some funding out there at the, to regroup us from some of the loss that we've incurred during the COVID. My wife spoke with Mr. Alan Davis, and he said that the monies had not been set aside. We don't know if the money's been set aside, if y'all got it, whatever, but the only thing we're asking is if you're going to set it aside, let us know what you need, you know, if you need our figures that we've lost from 2019 to 2020, being one in quarterly, because our bingo every Friday night, we've lost a lot of money just in bingo.
Well, what I would like to see, Mr. Combs, is, and we're going to have some requests from outside agencies and stuff like that, but we're going to have to be very thorough in what we ask for, and this is just me talking, I'm not talking for the whole, the, the whole council, but I mean, I think it would be naturally very, very important for us to, some, some, some groups out there will say we lost so much money in fundraising, right? But at the same time, what we need to see is, is, is the revenue that you lost, also the expenditures, which will actually set the net loss, right? And, and we want our outside agencies to be successful, because a lot of them are volunteer, 100%, so I know that, from speaking for Doug Kuppenhever, that's where I would start, and I'd want to see a history, other words, and you got your audit, so I, I would think that that, that'd be fairly easy, right? So.
The only thing we want is when we go to our accountant, you know, and say, look, we need this and this, just give us a plan that y'all need, so we don't have to keep paying the accountant, go pull the records back and forth.
No, we'll, we'll have to come up some type of format, and we'll get that out very soon.
Mr. President, one, we, we have a folder full of requests, so Mr. Combs isn't the first to come in, many of the outside agencies has asked for funding.
Well, one of the first ones I asked is very, very early on was Alternative to Violence.
Correct.
Right? They, they asked.
Child Addict C Center, Shenandoah Hospital, Women's Center.
The Pulse.
Yeah, Faith Christian Academy is submitting a request, so what I'm recommending to the council is before you have Mr. Combs go back and gather information, is for this council to form a committee to decide, number one, what your priorities for this money is, and then at that point, develop a process that if you're going to open it up to outside agencies, you know, the forms that they need to submit, documentation, because if Mr. Combs goes back and he starts gathering information, next you're going to have Beddington in here asking you for, so, I mean, I, I don't want to fill up your agenda with requests that you haven't decided what to, to do with the funding.
Right, right, yeah, and we spoke about that before, so that will fall on my shoulders to try to, try to start talking about a committee, and we'll do so, and I will, I will say South Berkeley, they, they do a huge amount of fundraising.
Well, and, and to support Mr. Combs' discussion this, this afternoon, you know, in order for South Berkeley Fire Department to get their new facility, they had to agree with the Fire Board that they would purchase their next heavy piece of equipment, which they did, they purchased a $750,000 squad, and then they had to equip it. So they do have financial obligations that, and that's why they worked the bingos every Friday, that when they were shut down, they'd lost those funds.
Right.
As Senator Manchin stated when he was here, that was one of the first things he stated, that he wanted to make sure that the voluntary fire departments were made open, and he even suggested a two-year snapshot of past fundraising abilities, that's what he had mentioned. So, that's, and that's why I went to the chairman of his board and said, look, there's going, there should be some money available coming up, after leaving Senator Manchin's meeting that day.
Yeah, and I, I think the only question that I would have on that, Eddie, would be, naturally, they still get their funding from the state of West Virginia, was he pertaining to local funds, or was he pertaining to state, or a combination of both? That's the, that's the question, because proportionally, the state got just as much money as we did by far.
Yeah. So that's the only question, but, but we'll, we'll work through all that details, but this will get us started, Mr. Combs, and, and, and you're right, I mean, what, when you all sold your old station and all that stuff, then that, that money had to be put into the upgrades that you all requested, and, and also to furnish the new station, if I recall, and like he said.
Yeah, we paid for all the furniture.
Like Ace.
Right, and, and the same with you guys on your squad, the same thing happened with Baker Heights, they have to do the same thing, purchase their next apparatus, even though they just got done with buying one.
That's a good question, though, Eddie brought up, did you, have you guys applied for state funding to help resolve your issues?
We get so much money from the state every quarter.
Right. But I mean, I mean, from the additional.
But other than that, that's all we get.
See, I was under the impression they were going to this, increase that funding.
I wasn't.
Okay.
I, I was under the, the understanding it was going to.
But they haven't.
They haven't.
The state got over a billion dollars.
Yeah, 1.2.
In American Rescue Fund, Plan Funds, which they have yet to decide what they're going to do with it, because every week, the, the meeting that Senator Manchin had here in JB Husky, was in, was in the early stages of this distribution, it's before even any of the distributions were made, if you remember, at that meeting, they said primarily, the money could only be used for infrastructure, water, sewer, things like that.
Right.
Every week it changes.
Oh, it was, it was strictly all for water.
It was.
Well, that was what was verbally used.
Right, and, and initially, that's what it was, and then a lot of the counties throughout the country came back and said, wait a minute, we, that's not applicable to us, so there, every week the guidelines change, so now that we can, we can use it for bricks and mortar, you can use it for reimbursement, we can use it for reimbursement of public safety dollars, anything that we've spent this calendar year for career firefighters and law enforcement and 911, we can repay ourselves if we so choose. This council as a group has not decided what to do with that, so that's why, you know, it is ever evolving, and, you know, $23 million sounds like a lot, but.
It's small.
You go through it pretty fast.
Yeah.
But just when y'all decide what you want, just let us know, so we only have to pay the accountant one time.
Well, we're, we're, we're trying to work on that as fast as possible, Mr. Combs, I can tell you. All right.
And let y'all know our bingo just started tomorrow night.
Is that right?
Got that on the board yesterday.
But I want to thank y'all for your, your, yeah, just work with us, please.
Well, Mr. Combs, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome.
Go have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next on our agenda, if I recall, is Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, just two real quick items, so on Thursday, September 9th, which is now six weeks ago, we discussed the DEP's request to have their contract of lease for their air quality station located, they date of 2000, Rouse Drive, renewed, it's, as I explained, it's about a 900 square foot area, the original lease was for three-year period that began on February 2nd, 1999, we did make some revisions to the, to the lease five years ago at the renewal, and it was primarily correction of the address, and we shifted responsibility for maintenance of, of the area to them, because up until then, our facilities department was actually maintaining it for them, and we didn't know it as quickly as they thought we should, they complained. The, the last five years has been pretty uneventful, so now they have requested a five-year extension of the lease through January 31st, 2027. You indicated a desire to talk to DEP regarding the location of the air quality testing site, and/or the addition of some additional air quality testing sites at other areas in the, throughout the county. We did have a Zoom call with representatives of the DEP a week or so later, pretty much were told that this is the site we want, this is the site that's been approved by the US EPA, and if you don't approve this site, then we'll have to, we'll have to go elsewhere, maybe even Jefferson County, so really were reluctant to, to add additional sites, because they said that it's not really what they're looking for.
And, and the only reason why I was looking for other sites is because we wanted more fair and equitable reading.
Right, and average of the whole county, not just that site.
But at the same time, they're saying that this site meets all their criteria, matter of fact, according to what the information they sent us, that it by far meets it, and I think it can't be more than 70 something parts per million or whatever, and we're 60 something, so if I remember, the colors are real close, but.
So they didn't come out and say no, but.
All right, so entertain a motion to give me authority to enter into another lease agreement with the DEP on air quality.
Absolutely.
Motion been made, seconded any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries?
The final thing for your consideration, as much as I hate to admit it.
I know, it's crazy.
It's time for our 2223 budget, we have started, as you know, we've received information yesterday from the state indicating that they intend, or they're proposing a 12% increase next fiscal year, starting July 1st, of our per diem rate for the regional jail bill, which could impact, based on the last full fiscal year that we had, impact our budget by about between $250,000, $260,000, if that, if the inmate population would, would remain constant. We met, I guess, early last week with West Virginia court, we should have our preliminary numbers, and it was an exceptionally good meeting, we should have a not-to-exceed premium number for next fiscal year sometime in November, for purposes of budget, so we've been working on, on, on your budget already. Our intent is to send out the fiscal year 2223 budget packets no later than November 15, 2021. Outside agency budget requests, which I anticipate you, you will have additional requests this year, other than the ones that we typically get, because we've had a lot of agencies ask to be added to the list, those packets would be due Friday, January 7th, then the following Thursday, which will be the 13th of January 2022, we would actually begin scheduling budget hearings.
Well, let me make something real simple, if they want some of the rescue money, let me part of the budget here, present it there, that way it takes care of timeline and everything.
You just need to decide who you're going to end it up to, and, and we would have to put on the budget form, whether it was general fund request, or whether it was American Rescue Fund request.
Right, right, but I think that's a, that's a good start.
Internal budgets would be due January 14th, 2022, which is a Friday, then I propose that on January 20, 2022, I'll give the six-month review of your budgeted revenues expenditures, what you had budgeted, where we are, and what your, what we have projected as your budget revenues are, as well as the total number for festival received. As you know, West Virginia Code 11-3-24 requires that you sit as the Board of Review and Equalization no later than February 1st of the tax year, so you can see that we have the first Board of Review and Equalization meeting, you would convene 20 afternoon of January 27th, and then the law requires that you meet every three business days at a time, not including Saturday, Sunday, or a legal holiday, until the work is completed, and that you can adjourn, sign, and die anytime after January 15th. So I have the Board of Review and Equalization scheduled, set up with February 22nd and February 24th set aside as option if we need it, we would continue budget hearings through February, if you're able to go sign and die with Board of Equalization Review on February 17th, as I anticipate, we would work with the assessor so that certificates of evaluation and rollback forms are ready for your consideration no later than March 3rd, meet with elected officials on the 10th, which would mean that we may have to have budget workshops on Sep, uh, March 7th and 8th, although we were able to do it in a day and a half last year, and then you would adopt the budget no later than February 17th, which gives us about two weeks to get all the information and basically how to resolve this. So this mirrors what we've done the past couple of years, the process will be a little different this year, because we will be doing budgeting through the new UNIS software system. It will be different, we're, we're hoping that as the budgets are submitted electronically, I won't have to do the spreadsheets, that Excel spreadsheet that UNIS will automatically do that, but at least for my peace of mind, we'll probably do the two concurrents, unless you're allowed UNIS to do its thing, and I'll continue to do the Excel spreadsheets as we've done in the past to make sure that they match up color for color, so. This is the, the budget timeline I'm proposing for next fiscal year 2223 budget hearings.
And let me go back, when I said that they could submit for the CARE Act money and stuff like that, I don't mean that they have to wait until next year to get their funding, we can say they can apply for it, we can actually talk about it, try to get things approved and distribute it out of this.
Well, the sooner we can, the council can have discussions regarding the disbursement of that CARE, or not CARES Act, CARES Act was last year, although we're still trying, we're working on getting some reimbursements back from the state, the state has about $166 million of CARES Act money that they've got to spend by the end of this year.
Right.
The American Rescue Act money, we have to have committed, and, and every month we have to submit documentation to the, to the state federal government vote that indicates what, if anything, we've done with that money, and then up until now, we're, we're, that there's been no activity, we have to have that commit, that money committed, not spent, but we have to have that money committed by the end of next calendar year, which is the calendar 2023, so the sooner we can begin that process and discussion, the better off we are.
All right. Okay, the only thing I have about timeline on Tuesday, the February 1st and the 3rd, I won't be in town, other than that, it's pretty good.
Well, that would be budget hearings and.
Order.
Or equalization and review, but if you remember, last year, it was actually, it's current fiscal year, we had no one in here.
Right.
Or equalization or review.
I think that's going to be different this year.
I actually hope, but.
But the cost with the increase, yeah. All right, everybody okay with the budget timeline? If so, would need a motion.
Subwoo.
Second.
All right, motion has been made, seconded any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, is there any need currently for executive session? Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honors.
First, I'm going to appreciate.
You walk in just a line, buddy.